Some time with parents and community to be able to just talk with them and have them, allow them to share that input as well and then really move forward in getting a job description and getting that out so we can move forward with that piece of it. So more to come for that, just that we have started those beginning pieces. And then the other piece, or even though that I've shared with you, but on the district website, we do now have the state report cards for both, all five of the schools, both in English and Spanish. So those are up, our data points for state assessment and demographics, graduation rates, et cetera, for 16, 17. So that is just my short report tonight.
Okay. Any other questions? So it's down to me and this is one of the things we need to talk about. At our work session on Saturday, we preliminary timeline for the superintendent evaluation for the year 2017 and 18. So we had a discussion on the fourth about the timeline for the evaluation. On the eighth of January, goals set for this year and the progression made thus far by the superintendent in each of the five areas of discussion. On the fifth of February, the board of directors will meet in an executive session to discuss and clarify the results of the evaluation documents that we put together. And an official document is also being developed that will be shared with the superintendent. And then on the fifth of March, the final, the final board meeting to approve the evaluation because it has to be completed by the fifteenth. And so we'll have an executive session that evening unless requested, an open meeting by the superintendent. So that's just an update on that. And then the other thing I have to say is our next board meeting ends on the eighth of January at 6:30. So we're down to the consent agenda. And before we approve it, do we want to talk about the personnel thing before we approve it?
Is there anything you want to add, Rich, or just that?
No, the only thing I would, there's nothing really new to add, other than that some of our, these are two of our licensed staff that are retiring, January 1st effective with PERS, but contracting back with the district for the remainder of the year.
Okay.
These were planned before, right?
Yes. You know, one of the things is that, that option has been with us for a number of years and as our teachers are becoming more aware of that, they have to weigh that with their financial advisor, what makes the most sense for them. And sometimes it is to retire with PERS mid-year rather than wait to the very end of the school year to retire from PERS.
So do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Don and seconded by Peggy. So all those in favor, raise the right hand. Motion passes unanimously. And so now we're going to skip the policy thing right now and we're going to go to this.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask both Dr. Vickery and Mr. Witt if you're going to come up and we'll, Ms. Jobe, if you need to be up here too. Are we good or?
I can get off to the table.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have two minutes. I'll give you two minutes. I can stand. You guys good?
I'm bringing my chair.
Okay. You're bringing your own chair.
So again, this is a, this is a course proposal request at the high school level, specifically world theater is the description of the class. And I'm going to let Mr. Witt explain it from there.
Yes, so, so some of you know that I'm not doing leadership anymore this year at the high school. And so coming with some other classes to do, we thought about world theater. And that came about last year, I don't know if all of you were able to attend our production of Boccon, which was, I'm not going to lie, in my 17 years of doing theater at Central High School, probably one of the most profound experiences I've had. It involved 17 Latino students that are not normally involved in the program. We had our Latino band play in intermission and walked people out to cafeteria. We had a taco truck there, what I thought would be a 15-minute intermission on opening night, turned into about a 50-minute intermission and people were dancing and singing. And it was an amazing experience. It was well-attended. We ended up, it was staged, so the audience was sitting on stage. And we ended up having to move it out to the auditorium because there were too many people coming each night. And I just didn't know what to expect from this part of the community because I haven't seen that representation before. But we did a play that was, what do I say, bilingual and relevant to them. And at the end of that process, I had several kids say they wanted to do more. And one of the things they wanted to do was a play about Cesar Chavez. And so I went around looking for plays about Cesar Chavez and I found, I kept finding reviews from this one that happened down in San Francisco area. And so I wrote that theater company and within 15 minutes I got a response saying, actually, go to the author personally, I'll put you in contact. And I contacted the author and he gave me the impression, do this play without paying any royalties. And it's just, it's called Monzy, The Adventure of a Young Cesar Chavez, which we would do, do as part of the class, so, and get some more kids involved. I've got lots of kids who are interested in that. But then we were like, okay, so what can we do to be significant, significant culturally to not only our Latino population, Hispanic population, but showing rest of the kids? And so I was talking with Wendy and there are several different areas of theater that we thought could be introduced to these kids. Indonesian shadow puppets, Native American storytelling theater. There's lots of types of dance that tell stories and theater involved. And so we've got some African step units. We've got, right here in this book is the course. It's 18 weeks of lesson plans and units. And Wendy was instrumental in getting that put together. But it's, it's quite an amazing possibility and I have several of our Latino population who have come to me and asked about it and wanting to be a part of it. So, and several of our non-Latino population who is interested in learning about theater from around the world, who would do theater, I've heard of all sorts of different things. So we just thought it was kind of a relevant topic and something that could be taught and done well with all of the expertise that we have. So.
I have to hold it? No, it's on. It should be on. It should be on.
I'm Wendy Boyack and I'm the tech director at the high school. One of the things that I think is important about this class is that what we discovered with Boccon is often these kids have to go home and help their families or have jobs. So to have a class is really the only opportunity they have to be involved in theater because they're already at school. And after school, they have so many responsibilities that they can't often make it to a rehearsal, but they want to be involved. And so by having it as a class, that gives them that opportunity to get involved when they wouldn't normally be able to because after school is too difficult for their families to, from jobs or whatever, to transportation for them to come and go at a different time than buses or et cetera are transporting them. So I think it's a great opportunity for them to explore their ability to express themselves, to make a difference in a community using the vehicle of theater, to have a voice because I think theater helps create a dialogue. And they wouldn't get that opportunity without it being in a class, just because of what's happening in their lives outside of school. So I think it's a great opportunity for them.
I have copies of the script if anybody wants to read it.
I think that last year after Boccon, which was a profoundly moving production, I was excited when Jeff came into my office and he said, I'd like to teach this class. And I said, okay, well, I'd like to see some content standards and I'd like to see a curriculum map and I'd like to see scope and sequence, et cetera. It wasn't very long and he handed me a poster child syllabus. It was about 20 pages thick. It was very well done. This is an example of what they do. I mean, they, I don't have time to do anything else, but they do. This was something that I felt really strongly about in adding it to the curriculum for all of our students. I think everybody should learn about what's going on in our world and world theater is a way to explore that. It's going to be beneficial for everyone. I really applaud this being added to our curriculum. I'd love to see it offered about four times a day. We're starting with one period. Any questions?
So would it be just a one semester or would you teach it both semesters?
It would be, we're hoping to teach it starting the second semester if it's approved and teaching it. But it could be a full year next year if it, if it's approved. We only have one semester this year.
But if you don't, if you don't approve it, we can't use that notebook. No pressure. Just want you to know that. Any other questions?
Is this going to substitute for some other class that, to make room for it?
No, no, we messed around with some of the FTE assignments and no, it's not eliminating the class.
Fair enough.
Here's what I have to say. We have a fantastic theater program. I watch even through our elementary schools and how the kids are getting excited, even at the, at the middle school, of just the, I'm going to say the vertical alignment when it comes to our choir and our theater. And so I do think that being able to watch it, and I actually went, I had an opening in my schedule, which never happens, but I actually had an opening and got to sit in last week on auditions. We have some fantastic, and I already know this, and I'm preaching to the choir here, but students performing. And so just this opportunity, I think is just another opportunity for, for students that may, may have never been involved in theater, have that opportunity now to be able to do it in the day and during the class time. So I think that is a good approach, especially when we talk about equity. So I think it is a good step in that direction.
So the two questions I have is the plan to, to be instructional plan, that's all prepared?
Yes.
And so where does that go as far as your time, you know, who's going to be the lead instructor? Is that built into the system already or?
Yes. Yes, I, that is something we discussed at the beginning of the year. If this would be approved, that I would start second semester. I have a spot in my schedule for it. And so Wendy, I don't know if you guys know, she volunteers with me six hours a day.
Yeah.
And so she would be sitting in there with me and helping because she has a lot of expertise that I don't have.
Okay.
And so, but I would be the teacher of record, obviously.
So what do you need from us?
Just a motion.
So do we have a motion on the floor to allow them to begin teaching?
If I move, we approve it.
Motion to teach world theater, second?
I'll second.
Second from Peggy. All those in favor, right hand? Go forth and make a play.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let us know when you're performing something during the days.
You said you had.
I will do that. We're going to perform it to a public college. Would you like a copy of the script?
I'd like one.
Perfect. And eight seconds.
Thank you.
Something to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So going backwards, now we're going to go to policy readings.
All right, so just that, we're going to work through this. So I'm thinking it will, we'll go through each one and I'll just give a, an overview and then obviously open to, to questions and then we can do a final approval at the end if you guys feel comfortable with that. Just for the public, so we're clear, throughout the next few months, we are going to be doing some maintenance of our policies. So throughout the months, you're going to see us work through handfuls of policy moving forward to get ourselves up to date. And so this is one of the first rounds, first readings for it. So we're going to start with policy BDDH, which is our public comments at board meetings. In this section, what I'm going to say is the language is changed to reference more of a community members in that direct, but really focusing on the second page, just focusing on the comments regarding by staff members. As we already do at the beginning, this gives a little bit more clarity into if comments are made in regards to staff members of how we will address that because again, we do not talk about personnel issues in a public forum. So again, it just, it just works through and changes the language. The old policy used to say criticism of staff members, which is pretty negative. So again, there's a request to change that to comments regarding staff members, but then still having that clarity to make sure that people understand that when it comes to personnel, that we have to be very careful because that is not for public consumption with, in regards to having conversations about staff. So that is the change on the public comment. Is there any questions from the board in regards to the public comments at board meetings?
Just quickly, we wrote that extensive public comment thing in our operations policy. Is this consistent with that? I mean, it looks like it is.
Yes, yep. All right, that's the first one. The second one is a brand-new policy and this is policy GBMA. The title of it is whistleblowers. We felt it was important because this really protects employees that should we have any difficult situations that do arise, that there is unethical things or there are concerns or danger or safety, that this protection is, is in place for any employee within the school district. So the entire policy is brand-new that we would be adopting. Questions about the whistleblower policy?
There are laws that also protect.
Correct. Yes.
I think that brings us probably in line with the law with, because they don't necessarily have to do something here, they can go to the state.
Correct.
Federal level and start, you know, there's got to be some protection.
Oh, she was asking that you guys please speak into your mics.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, so the next one is license requirements. And this is just adding clarity to what we are already doing. So it really ties the language into the ORS laws and makes it clear that we are required to follow the TSPC, I'm getting better at saying that, standards within the state of Oregon. And then again, we're just looking at the shaded areas are just new clarity of practice that we already have in place. So what we go through of submitting an application, that we do a complete background check. Again, a lot of what we are already doing in practice, just wanted to update in policy so we had it set forth. So you will see, again, there is, and this policy again is GCA license requirements. Again, really getting into what we already doing in practice within the school district. Questions about that one?
The 90 days is what it's always been, right?
Just to add a little clarity to that, TSPC has also updated some of its rules and regulations. And this language is somewhat just reflecting those changes. In practice, it's not really doing anything different than what we're already doing.
Thanks, Rich. Any questions?
How long does it normally take for a background check?
For, for a teaching license, for a background check for us, we do a preliminary background check that goes through Chris. That's usually within a week for us. Pardon?
Chris isn't a person.
No.
Criminal, something, something, something. Then it goes to the Department of Ad, for a teaching license, that goes through TSPC and the Department of Ad. When they verify that they have a license, that indicates to us that they have done a criminal background check, which includes fingerprinting.
Reason I ask is the business that we're in, we have to run, get them background checks on prospective employees and it just takes forever.
Well, and if you look at, that's the, there is a bit of lag time sometimes. Up to 90 days.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, so the next one is, the code is GCDA/GDDA and it's dealing with criminal record checks and fingerprinting. So there is a recommendation, our current policy, you can see that top part is, the recommendation came from OSBA for complete change. So this is truly deleting what was previous. And to some degree, this puts us into the practices that we are already doing again. And I'll let Rich, if you want to clarify any of those pieces?
Yeah, on, on this piece here, the process that we had used, and this is a change not only in policy recommendation from OSBA, but it's been a change in law and how those fingerprinting processes work. As a district, we used to send all of our classified folks to the Independence Police Department and they would get fingerprinted there. And the district would pick up the cost of that fingerprinting as part of their application procedure. It was pretty minimal. They have changed that to what they call a field service printing. And we have to send folks to one of these authorized field service prints where they're doing electronic scans of fingerprinting versus what we were, which was the ink and roll your thumb over it and then it gets sent away. So that's the process that has been mandated by the state that we go to. Now our policy is going to reflect the new process that started this fall.
Questions about this policy?
How does this affect, on the second page here, it talks about, like in the middle, volunteers that have director unsupervised access to students. How does that work with, like some of our coaches are volunteering? We're doing backgrounds on them, I assume?
Correct.
Or are they just filling out the volunteer forms?
They fill out the volunteer form and when they do that, they're not allowed to volunteer until they've had a background check.
Okay.
And know that we will be bringing back, that is one of the policies we're also looking at, is the volunteer policy. It is not in this grouping, but it will be coming in the months to come because we do want to have some clarity because of some things that we're working through across the district of being crystal clear of volunteers, what does that look like? Is there a minimum age? So we're working through and we'll bring that to you because again, we want to have that consistency across it, but we do.
Yeah, just, we did background checks on over 3,000 volunteer apps last year. So we do a lot.
And the, when it talks about disclosing the presence of convictions, are there different criteria? So that would be just then under the paragraph about volunteers? Are there different criteria as far as whether somebody has, I know felonies are, are a big deal, but what about misdemeanors and types of misdemeanors?
Yes, we, we have had a practice based on our attorney's recommendation that we, we disqualify any volunteers with a felony. A Class A misdemeanor, unless it is a misdemeanor, quite frankly, we've had folks with DUIs that once they have completed a diversion or any probationary period attached to that, that that is allowable.
Does that get put in the policy of that criteria or is that on the form that they fill out or where is that information?
That information is, I would say, a practice within HR, it would be an administrative rule versus a policy that the board would adopt.
Okay.
So we'll go back once these are, because this is first reading and look at the ARs. Are there any adjustments that we do need to make? I also think that as we do this, part of that is looking at how we do our systems and building those pieces to make it clear. I think one of the concerns I always have is just people not reporting. We, we remind people that it's important that you tell us because again, I call it if you get dinged and you didn't tell us, that's a worse situation that you're putting us in of, again, you have seen things where a person has made a poor choice at 18 and now they are in their mid-30s. And so that, again, I think that's a different type of conversation when we're talking about volunteers, et cetera, as Rich said. So again, this is first reading and that we'll bring those and just double check because a lot of this did come with ARs that we will, like I did on the last one with the animal, or excuse me, the, why am I blanking all of a sudden?
Service animals.
Service animal, thank you, Rich. The service animals, how I gave you the information of the AR that we're going to move forward. There are drafts of the ARs that go with some of these or we will look at ours and do a re, potentially do we need to do a little bit of revamping of our AR from that, that process?
This, this when it comes back to us will probably come back in because of that sentence right there in the future. There's an, a.
You know what? I, I saw that this morning and I thought that was interesting because this is, this is what came from OSBA. So you are correct. What you're talking about is in the, in the appeals.
What I just pointed out was on the appeals portal, refers to the, the name of the superintendent of public instruction. And right now, we don't have one. So there'll probably be some type of change in this after we approve it again or something.
That could be.
Well, we do have one, it's the governor.
Yes. So just, just to add, and maybe that's getting too far in the weeds with volunteers, but we do deny a number of volunteers, there's probably not a week goes, goes by that I don't have a conversation with a patron, a parent that, that wants to have an explanation of what was found on their background check or why that prevents them from volunteering. And most of those conversations, folks go, okay, I, I understand, I, I probably should have disclosed that because it's an automatic denial if they fail to disclose and we discover it.
Good questions, really good questions. Other questions for the background checks? And here's what I would ask, if there are things that you look at and you still want to have conversation, please do reach out to me because again, we do have a second reading and if there is some pieces that we do need to change or we, we feel that it could be worded differently, again, these are recommendations from OSBA. That doesn't mean that we don't have the ability to change those with what we feel is, is important to us. All right, so the next one is code GCN, GDN, which is evaluation of staff. And again, this is, you will see, really gets us into, and again, I'm a little bit on Rich here, that this is actually our current practices that we have, are now establishing within policy. So we have been doing this for several years now, but again, it just makes it clear of the process that we move, use moving forward.
And it truly is an updating, reflecting current changes in the state level and the federal level on evaluation of, particularly with our, our teachers, because if you look at the, the back, there's, there's really one sentence that pertains to classified staff. So the real change is a change in rule because of No Child Left Behind and ESSA becoming the new law of the land. We have been in practice following what we knew was going to come out of Oregon's waiver with ESSA and so we're, we're still aligned with this policy.
Questions about this policy? Questions about this policy? All right, moving on because we're continuing with staff because obviously there are some updates that we have on human resources. So the next one is policy GCPB and GDPRB, which is resignation of staff. And again, this is just, just to give clarity, part of the reason that you have this policy is when we do have difficult to fill positions, and again, we even at the beginning of this year had a conversation of potentially where we're gonna need to keep an employee in a contract for up to 60 days because they're difficult positions to fill. This just gives more clarity on the process and have that in our policy in regards to that. Not always do we need to use this, but again, I also know that there are times it it may come into effect of two days before we start school and and someone is coming to us to with another position, we may need some transition time to be able to do that. So that is where really where this comes into play. Questions about this policy? All right, next one. Like I said, we're gonna be doing a little bit of policy. So this one, there's actually one more after this, I believe. So this is the just the probably the most significant one. This is policy in regards to graduation requirements. There is no changes in regards to the diploma in the fact of what we have in place is is the same. But what I wanna just make reference is a couple areas. You will see more clarity on the area of essential skills and the process to be able to to use those in the means of a diploma. I think on the second page, the process, what that looks like, and then how the appeals would work. The other piece that it does, because we are just wanting clarity or have clarity in a modified diploma, there has been a lot of talk of, you know, what does that look like? And so again, this just gives us a little bit more clarity in regards to this is what a modified diploma would look like. This is the process that you would go to. Who would be covered by that? I think that's where we needed to get some clarity and so this this definitely allows us to do that. And so you'll see major changes in essential skills, the modified diploma, how we go about that, especially students on a with an IEP. And then you look at the extended diploma as well. So there are changes, pretty significant changes into all of the areas. Again, we because we have so many options in Oregon of diplomas. Again, we just wanted to make sure that we had the most updated policy moving forward with that. And then there is some clarity just on our responsibilities of a district, on how we go about awarding those different diplomas if they're not satisfied with those requirements, the pieces that you can go through to appeal, et cetera. So this is, these are major, these are major changes. I would say in practice, we have been doing this, but this is now, just gives more clarity on the modified and the extended and the alternative approaches.
Are we using all of them now?
Yes, we are.
Like how roughly, how many modified diplomas?
Oh, if Ms. Heilman were here, I didn't grab that from her and I will I will get that for you and put that in the Friday report, how many modified we had this past year and extended, I will get that for you.
So a lot of this got pushed on the federal level too, right?
Correct.
Because of the modified.
Yeah, well, so the modified is, there's a lot of conversation right now with the modified.
Right.
Because of age. So we have a transition program where we have students in our program until 21. There is some language change that the states having to look into to say, which is gonna, will be a conversation that we will need to have should there should there be language that says if they are have a modified diploma and we are no longer allowed to use funds, we may have to have a different conversation. So I think there's still some things that although I'm asking us to do this on first reading, depending on federal and and state steps, we could have another conversation about this just because of the way things are. They are right now, that's why I'm gonna say that. Questions, questions about the graduation?
Subject to change.
Yeah. That that could be. And then the last one is the public complaint. This is KL. And really what this is doing is clarifying the complaint process. So really, if you look at, if there, as an example, and I'm gonna use myself as an example, halfway down the page, it says complaints against a superintendent may start at step four. Step four is clarified in the AR and I will get a copy of the AR to you so you have that. But really, this is just giving a little bit more clarity in the policy of where you potentially would need to start or want to start depending on what position that you may have a complaint. So again, that's not minor changes, but definitely needs to be updated within our policies. Questions about public complaints?
So do I hear a motion to approve the.
So this is first reading, so we get we get to.
First reading of the policies that were just presented. I so moved.
Second.
I don't think we need to, we don't need to do any any updating or motion yet. This is just first reading and then we will.
You adopted the second.
Yep.
Never mind.
So I would ask that if there is any clarity or clarifying questions that you do have, may not like the language, look at a different language, please do not hesitate to get ahold of me and we'll we'll review those pieces before we bring it back to the to the January meeting.
That was pretty painless so far. So that brings us to the point of comments by individual board members.
I am super excited about this new class.
Yeah. So would you let Jeff know that? The comment was that everybody up here is kind of excited to see this. So there's.
Christina, can I, would you mind, I might put you on the spot a little bit to just share about the lockdown that you were able to participate in, just if you don't mind sharing a little bit?
Oh, yeah, so the high school had a lockdown drill a couple of weeks ago that I had coordinated with you and Dr. Jobe about just kind of going to observe. And it was suggested that when when this event was gonna happen, then I kind of get out in the flow of of students and see what it was like. And I thought they did really well. I wasn't really sure what to expect, but the alarms sounded to signify that they were going into lockdown. Kids moved very quickly into the available classrooms. And from where I was, you know, I saw, you know, teachers really making sure that they were getting, you know, students out of the hallways and doors were shut and locked and lights were out and students were really quiet and stayed quiet, you know, until the officers came and opened the doors. And it was, it was pretty interesting and I appreciate you letting me come participate in that. And when the lights came on and I saw the students in the classroom, there was my kid. So it was kind of interesting, but thank you again.
You are a great sport.
Jan, correct me if I'm wrong, this was the first time we've done this in what I'm gonna call unstructured time, correct?
Yeah, it was during during passing time, purposely planned during passing.
So we purposely planned it to during that time because again, just what we have seen of late, that it's not happening during structured time, it's happening more in unstructured time. So that both the schools are working towards just as we practice. Again, it's something that I'd like to say we don't have to do, but that's not the reality of of the work that we have to do to to be safe within our within our schools. So thank you.
Just curious, how long did it take, the whole process?
Well, I would I would estimate our room, because I was in the main hallway and it was maybe 10, 15 minutes before we were, you know, had our lights on. But again, we know we were kind of at the front end of the school, so I don't, I don't know, 45 minutes, do you think before?
I thought, my memory says 37 minutes.
Okay, yeah, it wasn't too long before the whole thing was done.
Yeah. I got a great report from the both police departments. And again, like Ms. Jobe said, that we have a few areas to shore up, but for the most part, did get rave reviews in the process. So that's good, really good.
Have we done these at the elementary school yet?
Yes, we do. Little bit different approach, but definitely it is practiced. If you, and again, if you would like, I can give you, if you want to go watch, they are on my calendar so I I can give you information for that. It is worth going to see if you haven't at least once, just to see how dedicated and serious, even though this is a drill, how important that is, whether it be a fire drill, earthquake, I mean, we do all all types of drills to make sure that we're prepared should we have those types of catastrophic issues happen. So again, I give kudos to our building principals for A, getting those scheduled and being diligent. I was actually at the middle school the other day, there was a staff meeting and there was a reminder because they were having a fire drill, the monthly fire drill that is necessary. So it's just good to see that and and taking it very seriously so our kids are prepared.
And lockdown is tomorrow in the middle school, middle school passing time. Yeah.
Yeah.
First time for us too, so.
Yeah.
I always wanted to do it in large.
Any other comments from board members?
I just, I think this CTE thing, when it gets really going, is gonna make high school a lot more relevant to a lot of kids who aren't gonna go to college. And they can make a lot of the trades, they can make good money, probably a plumber, electrician can make more money than a teacher, so.
We had a really.
We want both.
Yes. We had a really great meeting last month about the Measure 98 stuff. What was it about?
High school success.
15, 20 people there?
I think we have a team of 18.
So a lot of people with a lot of different background and a lot of interesting conversation and so there's lots of room to grow. So I just wanna say thank you to everybody from from Alex, the food dude, to Brian back there with transportation and Denise and all the teachers and everybody, you guys do a wonderful job. We say this every single day and I have to say it every time, you guys are just wonderful. So we we just, I enjoy being up here, being able to help. And with that, we are adjourned.